Good evening, I'm Alameda County Supervisor Nate Miley. Thank all of you for taking the time out to join me live for this Town Hall Meeting on Illegal Dumping. This is my first live Facebook livestream Town Hall Meeting. As you know, I represent Alameda County and the communities of Ashland, Castro Valley, Cherryland, Fairview, and a healthy portion of Oakland, and also all of Pleasanton. I'm so happy to be with you tonight. I want to take this opportunity to thank all of you for listening to me because this is a very important subject matter that we'll be talking about and sharing our views on this evening. So let's stay tuned and let's rock and roll. Tonight, this is one of the fundamental elements of democracy, dialogue between citizens and their elected officials around critical issues. And we want to have some frank talk this evening about these concerns. Democracy isn't just about, you know, talking, it's also about listening and being engaged. And we're holding this Town Hall Meeting tonight livestreamed so that we can all be engaged and talk about some very important issues that concern our society, and particularly here in Alameda County, illegal dumping. As I said before, you'll have an opportunity to ask questions of me, and I'll be responding to those. Illegal dumping is unacceptable throughout our county in any shape or form, and we want to come up with ways of addressing this critical issue because we all deserve a beautiful community, nice streets, safe and clean neighborhoods. We all need to take a responsibility to make sure that our environment is something we can all be proud of. My purpose for hosting this Town Hall Meeting tonight is to bring up three strategies to fight illegal dumping. We're going to look at illegal dumping from a regional perspective, and we want to look at illegal dumping as it affects our environment and our public health. Now, in terms of illegal dumping, we can look at it from three different perspectives, both education, eradication, and also enforcement. We want to also look at best practices as well in terms of illegal dumping. In order to address this issue, it's not just an issue that requires my leadership, it requires all of us to be engaged and take a commitment into ensuring that our communities are safe, clean, and presentable because we do not want to have any illegal dumping throughout our region. Now, for instance, in the city of Oakland, I know the city spends almost $5.5 million a year dealing with this problem. And according to a recent report and survey, it takes about 75 illegal dumping piles throughout the city. More than 50% of those piles include items that are dumped from residential sources. That said, I truly believe that going through a three-pronged approach will help us with illegal dumping because we need to do all three of these things. Because if we just go out and clean up the illegal dump, dumping piles, all that does is encourage somebody to come back and dump again. We need to look at illegal dumping and address it from both eradication, that is cleaning it up, enforcement, and also education and awareness. And that's what we're going to continue to try to do in terms of our three-pronged strategy. Now, as it relates to illegal dumping, the issues of illegal dumping are something that I've brought together through a working group that I've convened. This working group is composed of a lot of individuals and representatives from throughout the county. Folks from the Oakland City Council like Rebecca Kaplan, Abell Gion, Oakland Public Works, Alameda County Public Works, Environmental Health, StopWaste.org, the District Attorney's Office, Alameda County Sheriff's Department, and many, many others from other jurisdictions are working with us on this illegal dumping task force so that we can look at this comprehensively. Because as I said, illegal dumping isn't just an issue that affects one community or one jurisdiction, it also affects the entire region. Now, we meet on a regular basis, my illegal dumping working group, to try to look at best practices to reduce illegal dumping. Our working group includes one of the former Governmental Affairs person from Waste Management, David Tucker, who's working with me on trying to come up with solutions to illegal dumping. We want to encourage and have more engagement Town Hall Meetings. We want to encourage people to talk to me and my staff and office about approaches that we can take to try to come up with legal dumping. We want to look at the bulky pickup program to see how that's working, to see if that's helping to alleviate the problem, or if there are things we can do to tweak that, the bulky pick type, bulky pickup type program to see if it can be more effective. In the unincorporated area, I have a group called Curb, Communities United to Remove Blight, that's working on illegal dumping and trash and litter and the illegal dumping in the unincorporated communities as well. Please contact your local sanitary districts or Loma and Castro Valley if you live in the unincorporated area for more information about how you can help us address this problem of illegal dumping, and also to give us your ideas and your suggestions. Now, let's look at the three strategies around illegal dumping because this really gets to the heart and soul of what we're attempting to do. The first strategy, education. Over the last year, I've worked with the Beautification Council and the Downtown Street Team on illegal dumping. Now, with the Beautification Council, we're focused on mattress recycling, and we've engaged the Mattress Recycling Council in that effort as well. Because mattresses, if you notice, if you just drive around, you see mattresses dumped everywhere. And mattresses can be picked up and recycled. Those that are not necessarily appropriate for recycling can still be picked up and discharged appropriately at no cost. And so through the Beautification Council, we're holding collection events, and we're also allowing people to come and turn their mattresses in at no cost at the Beautification Council's collection site. With the Downtown Street Teams, for instance, we're working with them, we've contracted with them, so that they have the homeless going out and picking up litter on East Four, not East 14th Street, but International Boulevard. Actually, that is East 14th Street and also Mission Boulevard between Hayward and the city of San Leandro. They go out and pick up trash, they do some, cut some strawberries or overgrowth in the sidewalks and things of that nature. And they do that in order to give back and give the homeless something that they're doing that's very responsible, and it helps the community as well. And it's a win-win for all of us when the Downtown Street Team is doing this effort. And I consider both work that we're doing with the Beautification Council and the Downtown Street Team as an example of, you know, the partnerships that we take on with the community. And that's what we're doing as an example with our education piece. But there's other education stuff that we're trying to do as well. We're working with an individual called Jeff Kirchner, and Jeff has an app called the Literati. And it's Literati, and it's spelled L-I-T-T-E-R-A-T-I. Once again, Literati, L-I-T-T-E-R-A-T-I. Literati, and if you download that app, literati.org, you can participate in helping us pick up litter and deal with trash as you see it, and you can be contributing that way. That's one thing that you can do, that we can collectively do in order to address the problem of trash and litter in our community. Because illegal dumping isn't just, you know, the big stuff, it's also the small stuff as well. Now, let me go to our eradication efforts. With, I've talked a little bit about awareness, but also with awareness, we're working with StopWaste.org and with Literati. We want to get that into the schools and raise more awareness to the schools. But now let me talk a little bit more about eradication. This is an important element of the strategy because it's part of a bigger idea about being connected to the community. Let me share with you what we're doing in Hayward. I've already talked about the Downtown Street Teams and the pilot that we've done with them around eradication in the unincorporated area, and that they are also doing in the city of Hayward as well. Now, additionally, with eradication, we are working to have cleanups. And we just recently, and I want to give a shout out to the Castro Valley Sanitary District because we recently had a big cleanup day with over 100 volunteers who worked to clean up around Castro Valley Commercial Area, as well as the creeks with the Castro Valley Sanitary District. Those 100 volunteers were volunteers that worked through my office. But in addition, there were probably hundreds of other volunteers working with the Castro Valley Sanitary District on the cleanup this past Saturday in Castro Valley, working in the schools, doing plantings, doing composting, picking up litter everywhere. So that was really, really important, and a big shout out to the Castro Valley Sanitary District and all the volunteers who participated in that cleanup. Now, with the Downtown Street Teams, as I said, they've helped us as well, and they're providing a stipend to the homeless. And as I pointed out, that's a win-win situation when we have the homeless helping us to pick up litter as well in the communities. Now, another thing that we've noticed with the Downtown Street Teams, and I just want to mention this because this is pretty important. Since launching the program in mid-February of this year, the Downtown Street Team has removed over 8,400 gallons of trash. That's 8,400 gallons of trash. They've picked up 14 needles, and the two team members have obtained, or two of the team members who were formerly homeless have obtained full-time employment due to their participation on the Downtown Street Teams. And that's just since February. And once again, I consider it a best practice, and it's really helping us with the issue of trash and dumping. Now, as I leave from the Downtown Street Teams, let me go and talk a little bit about our enforcement efforts, which is another prong of our approach at addressing illegal dumping. So we've, you know, we've got education and awareness, which is important. We've got eradication, which is important, and now with enforcement. And enforcement is the other prong because that is seriously needed. Because of people who are legally dumped, we need to go after them. So with the enforcement piece, we are working on strategies with the District Attorney's Office and the Alameda County Sheriff's Department to put together an illegal dumping task force that would go out and try to, let's say, enforce laws and arrest and prosecute people for illegal dumping. The District Attorney sees illegal dumping as an environmental issue, as a threat to our environment, as a threat to the public health. And so we want to prosecute, we want to get these illegal dumpers, we want to arrest them, we want to prosecute them, and the District Attorney is committed to this. And the District Attorney is working with Acts Full Gospel so that Acts Full Gospel, through its Men of Valor, can help us as well. But in addition to our enforcement efforts, we are also looking at something else, which is extremely important. Often as consumers, we hire these small haulers to come and haul away items for us. Well, what happens? Some of these haulers are not very scrupulous. They end up dumping the items. They pick the items up, and then they dump those items. And we want to try to curtail the dumping of these items by these small haulers, these small mom-and-pop haulers. And so we're looking to come up with a way of a permit program, a medallion program, that would require these haulers to be licensed. And we're not talking about anything owner or overburdened some. We're looking at trying to regulate them so that we know who is a hauler of items that we asked them to pick up and haul away. And then as a consumer, if you know that person is licensed and has a medallion, has a permit, then you know that person is much more trustworthy and that they're going to abide by the rules and regulations and not end up dumping that items that they're hauling away from your place, dumping those out on the street or somewhere else and causing, once again, an environmental problem, a public health problem. So we're looking at a permit approach for these small haulers as well. Another thing we're looking at is trying to see how we can, back on the bulky goods pickup, so often with the bulky goods pickup, the only persons that can have the bulky goods pickup are the landlords. They're notified of this. And that's an issue when it comes to multi-unit dwellings. We need to make sure that not just the landlords are notified of the bulky good pickup, but that the tenants can be notified of the bulky good pickup so that tenants can take advantage of that and not be relying upon the landlords. Because often, if the tenants don't know about a bulky good pickup, then they sometimes, once again, they end up putting their things out on the sidewalks or dumping their things when in actuality, they could call up, have a bulky goods pickup, and have those things taken away for free without any charge, and they wouldn't have to worry about having to pay a cost. So that's another thing that we need to look into as well. So as I said, this Town Hall Meeting on Illegal Dumping is extremely, extremely important. My illegal dumping working group that I've convened, we'll be meeting again later this month. We've met with the Mattress Recycling Council. We're going to be sitting down with Waste Management. We're going to be talking to others to try to see how we can come up with approaches to addressing this illegal dumping problem. And as I said, it's, all of us have to take a responsibility. It's a call to action. You can use the Literati app, so as an individual, you can get involved. You can organize a cleanup in your neighborhood and get involved. You can adopt a spot, or have your organization can adopt a spot and clean that up and get involved. You can do other things as well. Contact my office, contact the Sanitary District, contact the city of Oakland. See how you can get engaged in trying to help us address this problem of illegal dumping and trash and litter. Because it's not just a problem for one person, it's a problem for all of us. Because as I said before, we all deserve safe, clean, wholesome environments. And we want to go after folks who are making our communities an environmental hazard because they are dumping in our communities, and they should not be dumping. And we want to make it so that people are aware of their responsibilities, people are aware that they don't have to dump, and that we're providing incentives for people not to dump. And if they do decide to dump, that we can go after them. So as I said before, three-pronged strategy, education, eradication, enforcement, and we're looking for best practices. So I'm open for questions. I'd like for you to call in, send me your questions, let us know, let's have a conversation, a talk about this whole problem with illegal dumping. Often I get my best ideas from just talking, meeting with people. That's why we're having this Town Hall Meeting this evening, so you have a sense of some of the things that I've been thinking about and working with others on. So I want to hear from you because you might be able to come up with some other ideas and some approaches that can help us with this illegal dumping situation and this whole thing of trash and litter. You know, with trash and litter and illegal dumping, I'm going to be quite frank with you. It's irresponsible human beings, it's irresponsible people that is causing our communities to be blighted. Irresponsible people, individuals, because they don't have to throw litter out of their cars, they don't have to throw their cigarette butts on the ground. And cigarette butts, that's a big issue because cigarette butts can pollute, they can drain down to the waterways, they can cause problems. They don't have to drop their cigarette butts on the ground. People don't have to dump. None of those things have to take place. But because we have some folks who are just totally, totally irresponsible, they do that. And as I said earlier, we can go behind them and clean up, but they'll continue those bad behaviors. And what we need to do is we need to raise awareness so hopefully we can correct their behaviors. And if their behaviors won't be corrected, then we need to take enforcement action, and that's what we're prepared to do with the support of the District Attorney, the Sheriff's Department around developing an illegal dumping task force. So I'm looking for your questions so that we can continue this discussion. I think we've got some questions that have come in. And one question that I see that's come in is why is Oakland such a popular place for illegal dumping compared to other cities in the county? Well, I think Oakland, keep in mind, Oakland is the largest jurisdiction in Alameda County. It's over 400,000 people. And often Oakland, because it is so tolerant of behaviors and inappropriate behaviors that people take advantage of the city of Oakland. And that is totally unfortunate. Oakland has a lot of issues that it needs to address. And people take advantage of Oakland's, of the position Oakland's in. You know, it has the most, in terms of the services the county provides, Oakland requires a lot of our resources because it has a lot of vulnerable populations. And so because of the nature of Oakland, the tolerance of Oakland, the culture in Oakland, people feel they can get away with stuff in Oakland. So they come into the city and they dump, and they dump, and they dump. Now, Oakland Public Works, Oakland Elected Officials, Oakland Police Department, I know they're all concerned about addressing this problem with illegal dumping. And we are concerned even if we don't live in Oakland. I think people who visit the city, who work in the city, who have businesses in the city, who own property in the city, we're all concerned about illegal dumping, and we all can play a role. So the thing is, Oakland suffers from this just because of the nature and the culture and the fact that Oakland has so many issues that it's addressing, that people take advantage of the tolerant attitude of our city and the compassion of our city in terms of their dumping in our city. I live in Oakland, that's why I call it our city, and I've lived in Oakland for more than 30 years. So let me see, another question. What is Stop Waste role in illegal dumping? Well, Stop Waste role, Stop Waste, that's a government authority that's made up of representatives from a number of jurisdictions, cities, and the county throughout Alameda County. And Stop Waste primarily deals with the eradication of trash so that trash is not being dumped, I don't even want to say dumped, so the trash is being hauled to the landfill. And Stop Waste, they help to provide regulatory and really some type of oversight to ensure that trash is being hauled to the dump for appropriate recycling and disposal and things of that nature. So Stop Waste has a role in illegal dumping because it's their, more or less their responsibility to help to ensure that our communities, our county is abiding by our ability to reduce trash that's going to the dump. So, you know, we're kind of mandated so that people are doing more recycling, reuse, taking items that are compost, that can be composted and composting them, looking to try to make sure that we're not taking as much trash that could be recycled or composted or reused, doing those strategies as opposed to taking it to the dump because, you know, our landfill only has so much capacity, and so Stop Waste plays a role in that situation. So they have, I'd say, I wouldn't say they have a direct role, but clearly they have a role to play in helping us with illegal dumping and trash. Now, what I want to do is, oh, I think I just saw that Kenny Houston is looking in. Oh, Ken Houston, you know, he's a son of Oakland, born and raised in Oakland. I know Kenny, he's responsible, helping us with collection events, the Beautification Council. And so I'm just really, really proud and pleased to have Kenny Houston, son of Oakland, working with us on this whole effort around addressing illegal dumping. And they're trying to address it with their work around mattresses and ensuring that mattresses are not being dumped out on the streets. So if you see a mattress, just think about the fact that you can contact my office or contact the Beautification Council, and we'll try to get the Beautification Council to pick up those illegally dumped mattresses. And as I said, when we have a collection event, you can bring your mattresses to the Beautification Council site and drop those mattresses off free of charge. And then when the Beautification Council opens up their collection site, which will be July, you can bring those mattresses there and drop them off free of charge. And we don't care where you come from. You can, you know, you can drop them off from, if you're in the city of Oakland, you drop them off if you're in a neighboring city, you can drop them off if you're in a neighboring county. The issue is, we're anticipating that most people who live in Oakland will make use of this convenience and that because it's right out near the Coliseum, and will use this as an opportunity to get rid of their mattress. And the other thing I want to just keep in mind with the Beautification Council is, ultimately, if you have mattresses and you don't know what to do with them, you'll be able to contact the Beautification Council, and they'll come and pick up your mattresses for you so you don't have to worry about getting that mattress dumped. And they'll pick it up free of charge. So we haven't started that aspect of the, with the Beautification Council just yet, but we're going to be doing that very soon in the near future. And the final thing with the Beautification Council is this. If you are interested in helping fund the Beautification Council, they're a nonprofit organization that's working with us on illegal dumping, particularly addressing the issue around mattresses, contact my office or contact the Beautification Council because we're trying to raise funds to help with this cause. So that's the Beautification Council. So once again, thank you Kenny Houston, a big shout out to Kenny. Oh, I see another person has contacted us. Cynthia Arrington. Cynthia's out there in Sobrani Park, she's been working with us on trying to address issues in Sobrani Park and that community over many, many years, a tireless community leader, advocate, concerned citizen in Sobrani Park in Oakland, in East Oakland. You know, Cynthia works with us on trying to address the quality of life issues in Sobrani Park, not just, you know, we could say issues of violence, but when I talk about a healthy community, a healthy community is a community that we'd all want to live in. It's a community that has, you know, good schools, good parks, it's a clean community. And that's where illegal dumping comes into play because we all deserve safe, clean communities. And Cynthia's worked really diligently with us in Sobrani Park on trying to make Sobrani Park the type of community we all would want to live in. I know out in the Sobrani Park, we have an organization that's working with us with the formerly incarcerated out there in Sobrani Park as well. We have many organizations that are involved in trying to improve the quality of life in Sobrani. And through the Resident Leadership Council, Resident Action Council, Sobrani Park's been engaged with both the city of Oakland and the county around trying to improve conditions in Sobrani Park, both working with the Soul District as well. So I appreciate Cynthia tuning in, asking questions, working with us. It's just really great to have good folks out there because people expect a lot from government, but government is only as good as all of you helping us with the issues and concerns. Government can't do it for you. Government needs you to be involved in helping us to address some of these critical issues, some of these tough issues. And some issues might be tougher than others, but all issues regardless of how large or how small are important issues if they're affecting your quality of life. Now, let me see here, I got another question here. Do you work with the East Oakland Congress of Neighborhoods and their efforts to address dumping? Oh, yes. Quite frankly, the East Oakland Congress of Neighborhoods held a large, I said, a large community meeting at, let's see, I'm trying to recall the church, the Catholic Church just recently, but it was a large community meeting with about 800 citizens there from throughout Oakland. They were addressing the mayor and the Oakland City Council at the Town Hall Meeting. They had a smaller meeting at St. Louis Bertrand's, but they had a big meeting out in, I think, near San Antonio Park, and I'm trying to recall the church at the moment. But they raised with the city officials, the mayor and city council, certain things that they'd like to have addressed. Yeah, that church was St. Anthony's, where they held the large community meeting. And it was very impressive. I mean, to just understand the importance of illegal dumping and the fact that people want clean, safe neighborhoods, imagine 800 people coming out for a meeting of that nature, asking their city officials, their elected officials, their representatives to take action on this issue and concern. So clean communities, safe communities, that's something we all want to have, and we all strive for. And safe, clean communities are not just deserving of your ethnicity, of your gender, of your class. Safe, clean communities, environmentally wholesome communities, we all deserve those. And that's why we all need to be involved in this whole effort at addressing illegal dumping and trash in our communities. So yes, I really applaud, a big shout out for the East Oakland Congress of Neighborhoods and the work they're doing because if you weren't doing the work you're doing, maybe I, as an elected official, the city council and the mayor might not be paying as much attention to this issue as we should be. So I want to thank the East Oakland Congress of Neighborhoods for all you're doing to raise this issue as an important issue. So thank you. Now, I think we've got some more questions coming in. Who regulates illegal dumping? You know, that's, that's a real problem. Who regulates illegal dumping? Because nobody regulates illegal dumping. There's no one entity in the city, the county, or the state that's responsible for bringing together our collective resources, our collective talent and energy, our collective knowledge and experience to try to address the problem of illegal dumping. That's a real big issue and concern. Because earlier on, somebody asked the question about what's the role of StopWaste.org? So it's a governmental body, but once again, it's more concerned about the landfill and keeping trash out of the landfill and trying to have people go more with recycling and reuse, and that's important. But Stop Waste, they're not responsible for addressing the illegal dumping problem directly. So probably we need to look at putting together some type of entity, some type of MOU, some type of collaborative effort. type of collaborative effort from governmental institutions to try to come up with a mechanism to regulate and address illegal dumping, because it's just not an Oakland problem, it's just not a problem in some neighborhoods, it's a regional problem that we see often. And it's a problem, as I said, that we shouldn't have to be addressing if human beings were just more responsible. Let's see, what's another question? Okay, there's a question about homeless encampments and the fact that homeless encampments often get blamed for illegal dumping. Well, I just want to say, homeless encampments are not to blame for illegal dumping. I want to say that emphatically, let me repeat that. Homeless encampments are not responsible for illegal dumping. What happens is, all of us good citizens bring items to the homeless at these encampments. We bring them food, we bring them blankets, we bring them clothing, we bring them things. And what do they have to do with these things? If there's no proper place to dispose of them, where do you think they'll end? They end up on the streets. So some of the responsibility lies with us, and I'm not saying we shouldn't be helping the homeless, we should. And I'd like for folks who want to help the homeless to contact Alameda County's Healthcare for the Homeless, because we can help you figure out appropriate ways of going about helping us to address the homeless issue. And I think somewhere down the road, I'll be having one of these livestream town hall meetings just to talk about housing and the homeless issue. So I don't want to go down that track too much at the moment. But contact Healthcare for the Homeless, so that you can, so that we can have you, inform you of ways that you can help us address the homeless problem. So the homeless end up having things we bring them, they end up being on the streets if they don't have a way of properly disposing of them. Then what happens additionally is, the homeless have items themselves. So if they don't have appropriate sanitary facilities, if they don't, you know, if they can't shower, if they can't do laundry, if they can't have appropriate toilets, what do you think's going to happen, folks? That stuff's going to end up on the streets and the gutters. So that's why we can't blame this situation on the homeless. We need to all work together to try to address the problem of the homeless. And if we have homeless encampments, we need to try to ensure that there's sanitary facilities, there're porta potties, there're showers, there're portable showers, and that there are proper containers, so that waste items that the homeless no longer want can be appropriately disposed of. We were talking with the state, and I'm really pleased that Assembly Member Rob Bontas' office is working with us. As I said, through my illegal dumping working group, we've got a lot of different people engaged in this. And Assembly, Rob Bontas' office has been at a number of my meetings on illegal dumping. And they're looking at how we might be able to get some state funding to address homeless encampment maintenance, so that we can, so that we, if people are at homeless encampments, at least we can try to maintain these homeless encampments so they aren't so unsightly. So that's another thing that we're looking to do as well, trying to apply for funding from the state for homeless encampment and maintenance. So let's see here, I'm looking at the screen, and I think, is Kenny Houston on the screen? Or who else is up there on the screen? Patricia Brooks? Okay, so thanks for tuning in. Patricia, Kenny, David Tucker, what?
Kim wants to know about the Safe Drug Disposal Ordinance.
Oh, yes, I couldn't see the question, the Safe Drug Disposal Ordinance. Well, you know, that's an ordinance that allows people to deal with their drug, their medications, so that they can properly dispose of them in a way that is not contributing to the environmental decay, that is helping with the public health, and it's not, and people are not hoarding their medications that they have accumulated over time. And those medications are not being abused by young people for farm parties, that's what they call them. And so with the Medication Disposal Ordinance that the county enacted and was successful in defending all the way up to the United States Supreme Court, we're working with the Meds Project, and people can take their medications and dispose of them at over 30 different locations throughout Alameda County. And we're constantly trying to get more locations available that are convenient for people to dispose of their medications. You know, I want to give a big shout out to Walgreens and Kaiser for working with us on this, they've opened up disposal sites as well. And we've had a number of law enforcement facilities like Pleasanton and Dublin that have opened up in the, you know, Sure's Department, so that people can come dispose of their medications. So we want to have convenient locations for people to dispose of their medications, because we don't want them, once again, to go into the waterways, we don't want people to hoard them, and we don't want people to feel that the medications can't be taken care of once they've reached their life cycle. And just a final thing on medication disposal, we consider that part of environmental or extended producer responsibility. When we talk about extended producer responsibility, what we're saying is that the pharmaceutical industry that produces this product is responsible for taking care of this project, product at the end of its life cycle. It's similar to what happens with batteries, with oil, tires, extended producer responsibility. We don't have that with mattresses, but maybe that's something we should have extended producer responsibility with mattresses. And I've talked earlier about Curb. Curb is something that works with us out in unincorporated areas, another committee I have, Communities United to Remove Blight. And we're looking at, you know, we do cleanups, we're working on trying to get more public awareness, we've just did a PSA. I think that PSA, that video will be coming out very soon, so be looking for that, our Curb video, on how we can keep our communities clean, working with, as I've already mentioned, the downtown street teams, working with them, working with the Beautification Council. Well, we're looking to try to put in place street cleaning, street sweeping. Because in the unincorporated areas, there are places that we don't street to sweeps. We don't sweep the streets. And so if we sweep, if we sweep the streets, that also helps with keeping our communities clean as well. I mean, there's, sometimes people don't want to have to move their cars, and they get a ticket if they don't move their cars. But think about it, if we didn't have street sweepers out there, what our streets would look like? I mean, they might be bad now, but they could be even worse without street sweeping. So Curb works on all of that stuff out in the unincorporated area, that and more. Now, and I also encourage people to use our Mobile Citizen app in the unincorporated area. If they use the Mobile Citizen app in the unincorporated area, they can, if you see some trash, litter, debris, things that need to be addressed, you can use that Mobile Citizen app, and you can click on it, and our public work staff or the code enforcement staff would address that. Oakland has a similar app that you can use as well. And once again, that's another way that people can be engaged. And I'll just go back to that. You can adopt a spot as a citizen, as a group, as a scout troop, as a church group, you can adopt a spot and keep that clean. You can do cleanups in your neighborhood. You can join us for cleanups, like what we just had, Earth Day, and we're going to have Creek Debate Day as a cleanup in, throughout the nation, Creek Debate Day. And we do cleanups here in Alameda County in different cities. So there are different things that citizens can get involved in. The Literati app, download that Literati app, and you can, you know, pick up litter, and you can see who else is picking up litter, and where that litter's coming from, what's the source of that litter. And this isn't just something that's happening in our locale, this is international, the Literati app. So where are we? Are we about ready for some next steps, some wrap-up? Do we have any more questions coming in? So I want to thank Ingrid for your comments as well. I'm trying to see what you wrote up there, Ingrid. It's hard to see it, but let's see. Ingrid. Okay, so thank you, Ingrid, yeah, blight, blight, yes. Because basically, what Ingrid was saying to me is that, you know, it's the broken window theory. If we make, if we don't take care of cleaning up our communities and keeping them clean, if people see that our communities are just run down, blighted, trash, debris, illegal dumping, et cetera, it's sort of like the broken window. You just pile on, and there's more of this stuff. So the status quo becomes even more unsightly. We become more like a third world country, as opposed to a country that is civilized and knows how to address our issues in an appropriate manner. So clearly, with illegal dumping, blight and debris, if you let it fester, it doesn't go away, it just grows and grows and grows, because people begin to take advantage of that situation, and it brings down the quality of life in our community. And I think that's one important reason why, I appreciate the fact that the District Attorney, Nancy O'Malley, you know, Nancy O'Malley is the Alameda County District Attorney, is working with us on illegal dumping, and she's looking at addressing illegal dumping as an environmental health issue, an environmental protection issue. So what else do we have up here? Ken, let's see.
How can neighborhoods organize community cleanups?
Okay, so there's a question, how can neighborhoods organize community cleanups? You can organize community cleanups, you can contact your local city officials and organize community cleanups, you can contact my office and organize community cleanups. I know we're very interested in working with people, we'll get our public work department to work with you. I'm sure in the city of Oakland, they're big on cleanups. Contact the public work staff or the mayor and the city officials, and they'll help you organize a cleanup or help you to provide with the materials that you need for a cleanup. I know in unincorporated areas, if you do the cleanup, and I'm sure the same thing in the city of Oakland, if you do the cleanup, the city or the county, if it's in our jurisdiction, will come and will pick up the trash and litter that you've picked up. I know in the city of Oakland, our Alameda County flood control will come and clean up creeks, because in many instances, we don't want citizens in the creeks, because it's not, it's not safe. Or if you're in the creeks, we want to make sure you're supervised. So we can have, we've had our Alameda County Public Health Department come up and clean many creeks, not just in the city of Oakland, but at other places as well, because creeks, flood control is a responsibility of the county through our public health staff. So once again, contact my office, contact other elected officials, and we can help you organize a cleanup. Now I want to be mindful of your time this evening, and it's getting closer for me to sign off, I don't know how long we've been on the air for this live stream town hall meeting. I hope I've provided you with some useful information. And as I said, I get my best ideas from talking to citizens, the constituency, you know, I can work from my position of authority, but we work better when we work together. So from the grassroots, from my position, if we're all working together, coming up with approaches and solutions, we can, you know, we can try things out. If it doesn't work, we'll try something else out, because we shouldn't be afraid to try approaches out to address tough problems. In this case, we're talking about illegal dumping. So I want to, once again, thank you for signing on, take the time to be a part of this Facebook livestream town hall about illegal dumping. I appreciate all your ideas and feedback tonight, I appreciate your questions. I encourage you to stay in touch with my office on this issue. If you'd like to reach my office or subscribe to this communication from my office, the information is listed on my town hall event page, so that, you can find the information there. You can also call us directly or email us. There you'll also find some resources listed about ways to get involved with groups working on preventing illegal dumping. So once again, we've been live at the Alameda County Board of Supervisors Chamber here in downtown Oakland this evening for this first and of its kind livestream town hall. This is the first time I've done this, interactive, we've done a lot, we've done a town hall meeting before, but it wasn't interactive. You know, my staff has said, "Let's try an interactive thing." You know, they're always looking for new ways of me getting engaged with the community, and I'm hoping we're successful with this. And I hope this isn't the first time we get to do a livestream town hall meeting, because as I said, I'm looking forward to doing one on housing and homelessness as it address, as it confronts all of us throughout our county. So thank you so very much, and have a pleasant evening, and go Warriors.